I'm glad I did.
I ate them all.
Well, I'm still gonna eat it. I still got two bags left.
Hello, kids. We're on.
Oh, they said we're going live in ten seconds.
We're live.
Okay.
I'd like to call the Order of the Avalon State Academy of November 2nd. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, by nation and government, in this hall with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have a few moments of silence for the casting of Tom Jordal and Robin Scott. Please be seated. Can I have a little call for these things?
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. Are there any announcements or communications?
I have none, Mayor.
Department head replies. Would you like to start?
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. I've got three quick items here. Update on the Mole Phase Two. The design team's current effort is to develop a request for proposal for design-build contract. To facilitate a good response and ultimately a selection of a top-notch design-build contract, a refined scope and vision must be developed that represents the community's wants and needs for the project. That starts by expressing those wants and needs from a diverse perspective, what I call "from the ers," okay, the operators, the secuers, and the maintainers and the users, okay? Those are all the people that provide that diverse perspective. And they all add that a different piece to the whole perspective that's necessary to protect and, I mean, to develop the project that will function efficiently, safely, and will stand up to the harsh ocean environment. So that's what the team's effort is up to right now. We've developed a 50% design intent plan that will eventually be the basis for the scope and vision of the RFP. This week, a stakeholder group of the operators and maintainers and secuers is gonna review that plan, and then they'll make recommendations. We'll make some revisions to that plan, and then that's when we roll it out to the whole of the community for input. They'll be ready for that input. And we need everybody's input, so please be engaged, community, please be engaged. Update on Five Corners. At the last city council meeting, I mentioned that we would be holding a neighborhood workshop to discuss certain features of the project, especially of those frontage improvements along Tremont. So we are now gonna hold that meeting on November 17th at 5:00 PM, okay? Because we'll need a little bit of extra time here to get with all the additional owners and get those sketches done so that we could have a meeting where everybody sees what's gonna be happening out there. It will be held virtually, and it will be open to the public in the council chambers. But the format of it will be a neighborhood meeting. It won't be a council meeting, a Brown Act meeting. So it'll just be an open discussion so that virtually or in person here, our community can share the viewpoints that we have on these different pieces of the frontage improvements.
And what date is that?
That's on the 17th of November, oh, 18th of November, excuse me. 18th of November at 5:00 PM. Thursday. And then we're gonna do two more fire hydrant replacements on Whitley, one in the lower end in the Hunter Block, and then one at the very top end there. And again, it's the spools that are steel, and they're getting corroded, and so we have to get down, excavate, get all the way down to where it's bolted on from four to six feet down, and put a new steel spool that has an improved epoxy coating on it that will hold up to the saltwater. And so those will be done within this next two weeks, totally done. This week, we're excavating and making sure that we have the correct parts. And then if we need to order some more, we can get those ordered up and then be ready to shut down the water in one shot and replace those. So if we don't finish getting that done, this piece, this week, we'll be shutting down the water next week. And as we get down the excavation, we'll update the community on what day that'll actually happen.
And I'm sorry, Bob, on the Mole Phase Two, when you talk about the users, who are those?
The users, that's everybody. That's a, you know, a universal group, okay? And so you could be both a user and a, one of our harbor officers, okay? But harbor patrol officers. But the difference there is the harbor patrol has a job also to do out there. Catalina Express has a job of doing their operations. So that's, the group that we're trying to focus on right now is the wants and needs of those security, the people that are operating and the people that are maintaining it. Then we bring it in, and then the whole of it is all the users. Could be visitors, could be the islanders that are commuters, or it could just be everybody else that's in those other groups I mentioned.
So if I'm retailer, where, what am I? Am I a user?
Yes, you're out there, and you're also a lessee. So you're one of the ones that's an operator out there.
And what if there are people that would like to think that maybe they could be a user? Can they come as well?
Yeah, they could listen into it, right? This is not ready for total public consumption yet because, you know, we're still, the lines are really wiggly. And we wanna be able to present something that we're sure that will work because some of the aspects are lines on the plan right now, and we need input from some of our key personnel to say, just like the harbor master, is that the right area where the boat can back up to put a boat at any time in with a crane? What is that area? So once we get that dialed in, if we get questions from the public during the public presentation, we say, yes, we've already tested that. We make sure that it's working, we're ready for those questions, okay? And that's what this group is supposed to be able to polish this up so that it's ready for public consumption.
And what's the date of that again?
That was on the 4th.
And just for clarification, that one, like Bob was saying, is just targeted towards very specific stakeholders and consultants and subconsultants. And part of that is, right now, we're only at 50% design intent. And we need to do some proof of concepts. There are some things that the architect has proposed based off of some initial feedback that we need to prove, we need to run through models, we need to solicit additional feedback. And once we finally have had a chance to go back and do that, we'll be taking that more polished, more finalized plan out to the public to solicit additional information. So they'll have plenty of opportunity. We're not trying to bypass any part of that public process. But we need to have very targeted discussions in order to hone in on some of the glaring issues. Right now, the plan is proposing that we need to prove before it's ready for public consumption. And at that point, hopefully, those are more minor and iterative changes that the public is looking for. But we'll have already tested out traffic analysis and traffic patterns, looking at circulation, looking at usability with the smaller group of stakeholders before we go out to a larger population base.
And the way that we share with the public where we've been, we can show essentially what we've had, we started with the plan, and then we roll out, you know, what we iterated too. So everything's transparent. We wanna make sure, we just, but, well, we can express the reasons why if something was on the paper and we, you know, rejected it and gone to another piece, another alternative, and now we have a refined alternative to present to the public, at least they know where we've been along our ways and the travels.
I got, one of the things I'm wondering about is that ramp. And I know, I don't think you, you're saying, well, what I think I hear you saying was that we wouldn't put that ramp back in there, we would just do parking lot and level that out. And I don't know if we wanna consider to think about the redoing of the ramp and how its uses could be because if there's a huge storm out at Pebley, we, the city have no, how do you access? You know, and I don't know if the water is that much different in that area as it is out at Pebley. And I know one of the things we just discussed was access for people like the paddlers, outriggers, and those folks to have easy access because right now, there's really no access. And if we're designing, I don't know, you wouldn't design to make that comfortable.
Those are great suggestions, the stuff that we'll continue to keep on the table. Nothing is off at this point. But we're still looking at, number one, what can we do with that space? What are the options? What's the highest and best use? And then look at some proposed alternatives. We also have to balance that out with the, where our money is getting spent for some of those improvements because obviously, there's some higher priority areas, and that could either be phased into a later phase or some of those ideas can also be, we have to be cognizant of what our permitting capability is at this stage of the game. So if you've got some ideas, we'd love to hear from them. But that meeting on the 4th and the subsequent meetings would be to flesh that out.
Okay, so that's on Thursday. Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Orin Karstarben, Harbor Master. Avalon Harbor has thoroughly been enjoying the calm fall conditions these last few days. We are actually preparing for daylight savings on Sunday, November 7th. This last weekend's swim portion of the triathlon went really well, was well-attended. Patrol removed the dinghy docks prior to the swim and then replaced them shortly after the swim ended there alongside the pleasure pier. The east side dinghy dock has been installed for the winter season. That's on the Joe's Rental Boat side. And the club dinghy dock will remain in until the week of November 8th, when removal of that dock is scheduled. All docks are scheduled for routine but necessary maintenance and upkeep by our harbor maintenance team. Today, they pressure washed the dive park stairs and the step beach stairs during this afternoon's low tide. Please keep in mind that the city dinghy docks have a 72-hour time limit on them, so please make sure you check your boats sometime within that time period to make sure it has not been red-tagged. A red tag works much like the marking on your tire when you park downtown and indicates a time limit that the patrol watches. The A dock on the west side of the pier is not for tying overnight. It's a transient dinghy dock for day use. This dinghy dock has been deemed this way for some time now, and you're not allowed to be tied there between 3:00 AM and 5:00 AM. If the boat is tied there, then it's been, is removed by the harbor patrol. The harbor department also provides a string line for long-term use by guests or residents. The string line is located near the Barbara Pearson dinghy dock, where it would be, it's been removed for the season, on the east side of the harbor. In other words, where the Wet Spot Rentals is located, the string line gives boaters the opportunity to keep their dinghy, which is 14-foot, described as 14-foot or less, on the string line without a time limit. There are no restrictions. While we provide this opportunity to encourage boating activities throughout the winter season, we do not accept responsibility for your boat. It is up to you to check on the well-being of your boat. If there's inclement weather or other events that threaten your property, you should respond and mitigate these issues. The shoreboat service is available year-round, and they can take you to the string line for a minimum charge around $4. Let's see, that's all I have. Oh, one thing I did forget. We did have during this period, total 349 vessels that arrived for a total of 2,102 nights, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Harbor Master? Nope, we're good. Thank you, Orin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, city staff, Michael Allegra, Fire Chief. In October, we ran 68 medical calls and 35 other fire-type calls. We had, we just recently finished our EMT training that the LA County Life Guards provide us on October 21st for the shakeout. We didn't really do the shakeout because the guys were in class, but myself and the captain went out. There's a new program that the Pasadena Fire Chief started. It's called Survey 123. So after an earthquake, we go out and conduct a windshield survey of our district, and we're able to put what damage to the, we go like, we're gonna hit the hospital, the school, Edison, the mole, just some big hazards in town so we can report how they're doing. So if we need help, it'll be into their big database. And then they said, what about service? We're able to do it without service, and once service connects, it'll automatically upload to them when we get service back. Other than that, we had a couple of vehicle accidents. We had one go, one roll on its side at the bottom of Marilla last Thursday night. Then we had an incident at the cottage with some food on the stove, just some smoke, minor, not even really any damage. And then we had a golf cart go over the side on the way up to the cross the other night as well. Minor injuries. Other than that, I saw a lot of eggs on Halloween. So next year, I think we gotta watch, be on the lookout for that. There was a lot of eggs on the streets and kids running around, which is good to see, but without the eggs.
Yeah.
That's it.
Any questions of our Fire Chief? Thank you.
And we got toilet papered out at Kenaby Park as well.
Hello there. My name is Greg Knapp. I'm sergeant. I've been here about a year. I'm the third string. The captain couldn't make it, Sergeant Klein couldn't make it. So we're scraping the bottom of the barrel here tonight.
Oh, no.
Anyway, they just asked me recent, within the last hour, if I could come and just answer any questions. Just a brief update. I know Sergeant Klein attended something at the school last week regarding the red ribbon. And then we did make a couple DUI arrests last week. And we turned some kids upside down on Halloween and shook out some eggs, for sure. Apparently, that's a thing here, being my first Halloween here. Next Halloween, maybe we can put out some, in a local flyer or something like that to have parents please their children and encourage no egg fights and those types of things. Aside from that, any questions?
Well, I would just like to say at night, you know, it's, we've got a much bigger problem than what you're painting with our children. I had a few parents say how disrespectful their children were, give me candy, dah dah dah. And they just, they need to learn some respect and some manners. Vons, they totally trashed Vons. That was insane. The sidewalk, all, the street, the sidewalk, the, anyway, it was absolutely a mess. And I just think that going out there in force a little more proactively might be necessary now that we know where they hit and that kind of thing because it wasn't this bad last year. Well, it wasn't last year, even the year before. So I think the kids are kind of out of control. And as we know, there's no consequences for anything they do. And it's very frustrating. I don't know if, how well the sheriff is coordinating with the school. I know that myself and probably others would be interested in sitting in and just seeing what we can do to turn these kids around a little bit. It's getting worse every year. And, because some of us who have been here for a long time, we've seen it. And we know, we know who groups, some of these groups of kids are as well. And I don't know what your interaction has been with them. But anyway, it's, it's just really a shame that the parents have no, you know, children aren't accountable to their parents at all and not to the sheriffs either, vice versa, whichever way that goes. So whatever we can do in the future, if you relate this to Captain Vidalie, but it's a little crazy. But thank you.
I agree. I will definitely relay that to the captain. The children that we briefly stopped were cooperative and handed over their eggs. It was that or us smashed them in their pockets. I'm joking, of course, but kind of not. But anyway, yeah, it's definitely a parenting issue. We could talk all night about this kind of thing. But as far as maybe putting out some pre-warnings, working with the grocery store, parents and students, you know, a broad approach to egging is not acceptable. So, you know, with a couple people that, myself and Rocky, I think most people know who Rocky is. We were out that night, holding a couple of them upside down, emptying out some pockets and, you know.
You can only do so much, I understand. But thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think we're gonna hear from Matt later.
I don't have anything to report unless there are any questions for finance. It did post a revenue report through August, I believe. Numbers are ahead of where we had budgeted, particularly strong with TOT. But I think every revenue source is at least matching kind of the pre-COVID-2019 levels with TOT exceeding it. So again, those come out usually latter half of the month. So I'll have September's out, the latter end of this month, so.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. I'm a little more emotional than I thought it was gonna be about this. I've been here for five years. I've been doing, I've been in the public sector for 27 years, 22 with Calabasas, and now five with, and I'm down to my last week and a half in my very last council meeting. I'm kinda sad. You'd think I'd be a little more happy about not being up in front of a group. So it has been an absolute pleasure to serve this community. Like I said, it's been, it's been five years, and the support that I've received from the city manager, Denise, and the city council, the city council, you know, prior to this one, has been absolutely wonderful, the staff, the department heads. My department, Dave Hart, Marissa, Jose, Tricia, Jen, Sol, and Tim, and others, you know, our seasonal staff has just been great. Just in outpouring of support for the things we've done. I think my hope is that we've ingrained these programs and entrenched these programs in the community that somebody can step in and continue to run them. But from the upgrades to the parks that we've done over the years, at JMF, the synthetic field, and the fitness center across the street, and redoing Kenaby Park, and getting the teen center going, and the senior programs going, just a lot of great things. So it's been a really fun five years. I really appreciate it. I appreciate your support. And with that, just a quick little couple, three things coming up before I leave in the next couple of weeks. They are, the Community Cleanup Day. Community Cleanup Day is the 13th, it'll be Saturday, the 13th, from 9:00 to about 10:30. So across the street, that'll be our November one. Thanksgiving gift baskets, we'll be doing 40 of those, the holiday baskets, we'll be doing 40 of those again this year. Full turkey, and stuffing, and cranberry, and salad, and rolls, and a pumpkin pie. We've reached out to the churches, we've reached out to the schools. We're working with Nia at the food bank and getting her lesson, kind of combining that. But if you know somebody, or if there's somebody out there that really thinks there's somebody in need, please contact us, either my extension 230 for the next week and a half, or Dave Hart, 231, to get that name in there. And then we will be handing that out on the Tuesday, I think it's the 22nd, from 11:00 to 2:00 at Avalon Community Church. And those folks that we've got on the list will get phone calls prior to that. And then lastly, and I don't know if Jim is gonna touch on this, but we've got a really fun 28th Annual Shop Catalina, our tree lighting ceremony, it'll be Saturday, December 4th. Once again, in participating stores will be the virtual treasure cards, the Christmas craft boutique by the Arts Council will be 10:00 to 5:00 at Glenmore Plaza. The Shop Catalina will be from 12:00 to 8:00, so starting at noon until 8:00 o'clock. Gingerbread House Decorating Contest will be that day. Drop-off of the decorated gingerbreads at the stage from 1:00 to 2:00, and then viewing from 2:00 to 5:00, and then awards right about 5:00 o'clock. We will also be doing a residential and business decorating contest throughout the community. Those will be judged that evening as it starts to get dark, so at 6:30. And then we'll have those awards available afterwards. Catalina Island Pony Club and Saddle Club will be selling Sees candy. Live music on the stage from 1:00 to 4:00. CKV, their little kids program, will be coming out at about 4:15 to do some singing on the stage. And we'll follow that up with the Holiday Carollers, the Jingle Singers, from 4:30 to about 5:00. Santa Claus, Chief, will be riding on the fire engine about 5:00 o'clock, and we'll get together on that, but come through town. And this year, we're gonna leave him. He's gonna help us light the, Mr. and Mrs. Claus will help us light the tree, a special treat. And we're gonna leave him on the stage for pitchers on the stage on one side. And I think a couple of years ago, we did smores on the other side. So we're gonna have smores on one side and pitcher taken on the other side. So fun, full day. And we'll also be taking over the annual canned food drive. And that'll be from 12:00 to 8:00 on Wrigley's Stage. So December 4th, market calendars, come support the local businesses. And we'd love to see you out for that. Thank you.
And hold on if you wouldn't mind.
We're using big words, Mayor?
I guess I can make a joke now. He's not on clock, right?
That's correct.
HR is still fully young.
This is a sad day for a lot of us, thank you. This is a proclamation, no, this is silly. This is a proclamation from the City of Avalon honoring Daniel Humpy on his retirement from the public sector after 27 years. Whereas Daniel Humpy became employed by the City of Avalon as the Community Service Director on July 18, 2015. I'm thinking of Val if I'm reading this. Whereas during Dan's first year of implementing the climate life, the Kenaby Park Project, the jump shuttle to the public pit trailing Avenue to Open Park in Avalon Kids Park. Whereas Dan modernized the recreation department by creating an online finance reports program to guarantee facility rental. Whereas Dan and his team built the dog park and created the MetLife Senior Program affectionately known as the Prime Finance. Whereas Dan brought back the Catalina outrigger program and revitalized the daycare program. Whereas Dan remodeled the teen center and renovated the park. Whereas Dan beautified many public spaces by having added sculpture garden and art at Jones Park Field, created the monthly community community table with Catalina, and then endowed the old president avenue with adding a road. Whereas during COVID-19, Dan mobilized the volunteer force to deal with the groceries and much-needed items to senior and immunocompromised resident homes, collaborated with the Avalon Community Church for info entries, and provided the supervised location of lifeline for children who were children in a virtual school. Whereas the leadership of our city will greatly miss the active participation of Dan in the day-to-day operations, if he were retired, with successful career in the municipal service after November 15, 2021. Now therefore, the City of Avalon, to Dan our deep appreciation for his exemplary service to our community and our best wishes for continued success in all his future endeavors, signing, Avalon City Council.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Many thanks.
I'm not talking to you. We don't have time. Can we do it here? All right.
I just had one quick update that I wanted to share out, and before I do, I just wanted to express my appreciation and sadness to see Dan Hunkey leave. I know it's going to be a huge loss to the community, and I've really enjoyed working with you, Dan. I didn't have a choice. Just kidding. On behalf of the Planning Department, I did want to share out that we are going to be holding a community workshop on Saturday, this Saturday, November 6th, from 1:00 to 2:00. We're going to be meeting here at City Council Chambers, right here at City Hall. The meeting will be broadcast, this community meeting is going to be an update on the status of the city's housing element. We'll be having a representative from De novo Planning Group, who's the city's consultant, who's guiding us through this process. They're going to give an update on kind of where we're at. We'll be discussing the city's regional housing needs assessment, or RENA figure. We have an obligation to provide 37 units, and so we'll be talking a little bit about how the city is going to be identifying the sites that'll count towards that, and where there's opportunities are going to lie. It's a really important meeting, we'd love to get as much diverse representation from our community as possible, so that we can fold that input into the plan. We will be incorporating whatever community input that we're able to solicit from Saturday, incorporate that into the plan, and it's our goal to continue on the development and continue to provide some updates. So, this will be the first chance that the community will have. Once again, that's Saturday, November 6th, from 1:00 to 2:00 at the Council Chambers. We will be broadcasting this on Facebook, the Channel 3, and the city's website, so if anybody has any questions, feel free to contact me, I'm at extension 121.
Great, thank you. Is there a city manager report?
I just wanted to tell Dan thank you very much, he brought a lot of energy and enthusiasm to the Community Services Department, and he was one of my hires. He will be greatly missed, and staff will do what we always do, where we have a roasting of that employee as they head out the door. And I just want to share one of Dan's favorite sayings as he came into my office. Oh, was I supposed to ask for permission to do that? My blood pressure will, will lower a little bit.
And does the city attorney have anything to report?
Other than fond memories, Dan, no.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember reports.
I'll go first since it's short. I did reapply for policy committees again, waiting to hear about that. And then I know, Lisa, you've been following the county redistricting. I don't know if you had a chance to look at their preliminary maps that they popped up. I think we, as a council, need to be aware that they're trying to pull us out of the sphere of Long Beach's influence, up to the beach cities, so, and, and like a lot of them don't even have any of the issues that we would deal with. I don't want to see us moving out of, out of that district, out of the San Pedro, Long Beach area, but they're looking at pulling us into Jalisco Bay days and then up the beach cities, so just to be aware, because that's what they did with our Senate District, and where we went from Avalon all the way to West Hollywood. There's no really reason for us to be in that, so I just wanted us to be aware as a group that there is that possibility, that they're looking at pulling us out of the Long Beach and San Pedro sphere into an area that we really don't need to be in.
Wow, okay. Lisa?
Sorry, that was a bit of a sideways. They've had the ability to draw your own map, your own version of those maps for the county redistricting and the state redistricting, open now for a little bit of time, and then had some issues with the county site where they had to pull down the whole system and restart it again, so that's not so encouraging to hear on that front. So, yeah, I do think we should, I don't know if we need to provide reasoning or policy requests for that, to that committee, but think that we should do that as well, so. Just a couple of updates that we'll have for presentations in just a little bit, so I'll go over those in a sec, and, yeah, I don't know, it feels like it's been a very busy week, but I'm not sure exactly what I've been doing this week, so it feels like the rest of the year. I'll let everyone else go.
Okay. Yesenia?
Of course, I also want to say thank you to Dan, I know I've extended, extended some words already of how much I appreciate him and everything he's done for me individually, and so much that he's done for the community, it's just, the list goes on, and he's going to be missed. Thank you for everything, Dan. And I did also want to say Felicia de los Muertos. I do hope our past loved ones know that we're going to always remember and honor them.
Very nice, thank you.
For me tonight, just warm regards for Dan and your family, wish you guys all the best. When you, when you get tired of the private sector, come on back to Avalon, we'll take you back anytime. But thank you, I'll ditto Yesenia's words of, of care and appreciation, and other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Okay. And, oh, I just had the opportunity to meet with Lions International, came to town today, there's about 50 people. The furthest one came from Korea, some of the others couldn't make it just because of the COVID policies, but we met out at the mall, they were delightful, and then they were going to be planting trees up at Hay Press, so there were three buses took them up there today. It was a, it was a fun experience, they were wonderful people. And for those of you who didn't see Dinner Impossible, it was really good for Avalon. I don't know how many people watched that show out there, but I mean, there was a lot of beautiful shots of Catalina, makes it look really great, and I guess I'm wondering, and I was going to talk to Jim at some point, if there's any way we can use any of that, even small segments of that, or seconds of that, in any way as a promotion with the Chamber. I don't know what the, the rules of the, they must, so we can discuss that, or Dave Stevenson can talk about that. Anyway, that's all I had. Okay, presentations.
So, we have two presentations tonight, and I did want to say, Mayor, to back, to piggyback onto that, did attend the Chambers Marketing Conference this past week, which was enjoyable and insightful, and then also had the Chamber Mixer as well, so, great job, Cindy and the Pancake Cottage Crew, that was a really fun event. So, tonight, we have a couple of presentations having to do with the Island Connectivity Group that we established this past year, and sitting on that group are myself and councilmember Cindy Meduyn Cassidy, and then also Jim Lutjohan from the Chamber has been instrumental in that group, with the goal overall of increasing and improving the connectivity. So, the first presentation tonight is from Revlon Williams, PhD, from the LA Orange County Regional Broadband Consortium, and she'll provide an overview of the organization's mission and its efforts to close the digital divide. And Revlon, I think you might be on mute possibly, if you can.
I can hear her, but not.
Just very faint, yeah. You can hear it from the room, but not on the dais. Matt's checking, one sec. Yeah, it's, it's coming from in the room, I think we can hear it, so it's definitely available, but he's just fixing that.
Okay, thank you. Can you go back to the second slide? Oh, thank you, I apologize, let me give you a little bit of, I'm near the airport, so my, unfortunately, I do get a little interference, so I will pause when the plane passes, and I apologize for that. We can, and the Los Angeles Regional Broadband Consortium.
We can't do this.
Together, early this part of the year, after many years of working in this space. Next slide.
Revlon, we're still having a difficult time hearing you.
We'll try to speak much louder, and hopefully I will make this a lot quicker, because I am having apparently, over, connectivity issues overhead. Can you handle? No? I, what I am going to do is I'm going to call in, and can you just give me a moment, and I'm going to go off screen.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Going to go off and call then, is that what she said?
Yeah, she'll call in directly.
You guys want to go up there and yell at each other?
Yeah!
Wow!
Wait, what, were I called first when we came into the room? We'll just wait a few more minutes, if not, maybe we can have Mike go first potentially, so we'll see if she's able to connect, she might be back on.
Give me an opportunity, I'll be on, after Mike, I'll call you.
What was that, Revlon?
So, do her.
I will, I will call in and participate in another way.
We can hear you perfectly now.
We can't.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Sorry.
You can tell us what she says.
No, that's not workable, I apologize.
Okay. Sure. Matt's going to have to call in.
Yeah? Can he come up and talk about the library? Sure, all right, Paul, come on.
We're moving to oral communication announcements.
Is that okay?
Sure.
It won't be that long. I just want to say, this is my first time at city council since, I think, 2019, so really, all I'm about is, we're open. Library's open. At the moment, the county has mandated a capacity of 10 people at a time in the library. The way I'm interpreting that is four children, four adults, and then the two staff, because we count, we are people. But it's working out pretty well. We've had quite a bit of children, the children are very excitable right now, but I put that down to the fact that they seem to really like being at the library. I'm trying to engage them with lots of activities and things, but four children is my limit at the moment, and I think that's actually allows me to keep a little bit of a eye on them. I'm finally fully staffed, at least for the next month or so. I'm hoping this is going to continue into the far future, in which case I'll be able to start doing my programs again, hopefully in December, I'm hoping, a Storytime, a Book Club, a Chess Club. I had two people wanting to play chess today, it was so cool. Meanwhile, I have laptops that we can check out, I have all the new bestsellers, mostly courtesy of our friends at the library. I've discovered we're a browsing library, people want to come in and look at the shelves and check books out, so it's best to have all those bestsellers there, rather than make people order them. So, we have those right there, and then I have a very nice man who comes on Tuesdays and gives the latest, latest LA Times. So, I have one LA Times, Avalon's only LA Times, available Tuesday for same-day reading. Kind of awesome. We've got free Wi-Fi, we've got free printing, I've got, when I left to come here, I had a lot of kids working on Dia de los Muertos masks, with these big old skull masks and coloring things, it was looking pretty good. I'm giving away decorate-your-own wind chimes kits. Next week, I'm going to have a Native American History Month craft, which is a Native American ledger artwork. Still doing our bookmark contest, you can still enter that, and I'm not saying what the prize is, but they, somebody did just send me 25 gift cards to In-N-Out, and I know, there's no In-N-Out on Avalon, but previous years, kids have won those cards, and they have a family thing, they go over town, and they have a family thing with hamburgers, you know, a big hamburger party, so get me your bookmarks. There, that's not so bad, is it?
No, that was great, Paul, thank you, nice to see you again.
She should be on the line now.
Okay. Revlon, can you hear us okay?
Oh, she's on mute though.
She's on mute, yeah, if you want to unmute.
Can she hear us?
Revlon, I think you're on mute again.
You're on mute again.
Only from the phone, so you should, it would be himy.
We can hear you just fine on the Zoom.
You're divided.
Did you hear the CDAT?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all Dan's fault because he's too...
Yes, you've impacted the Wi-Fi on the mainland now, thanks, Dan. So we'll have Revlin do a presentation later.
Yeah, we'll reach out and have her reschedule on that, she's at an airport and is having some issues on her end as well, so if we can just go ahead and move forward with Catalina broadband.
Okay, sure. So then the other presentation this evening will be from Mr. Michael Piasseki of Catalina Broadband Solutions, who will provide an update on CVS's operations and recent efforts to establish undersea fiber optic cable infrastructure to improve connectivity. We've got the presentation, Matt's going to pull it up there for you, yeah.
All right, good evening, my name is Michael Piasseki, and I am the Senior Vice President of Business Operations for Catalina Broadband Solutions. This presentation will focus on our efforts to move ahead on connecting Catalina to the mainland California with undersea fiber. Just as a little background information, we are the incumbent internet service provider in Avalon, we have over 1,500 internet customers, we currently use microwave technology to connect Catalina back to the mainland, and that does occasionally have intermittent service issues, and the technology can only go so fast. There are also other considerations with the FCC license bandwidth, because the microwave technology does require the use of licensed frequencies. We do have a planned upgrade in 2022 to double the capacity with another microwave system we are planning, and we are also working on fiber-to-the-premises upgrades. We've launched a few select customers, commercial customers already, and we're going to continue that commercial rollout in 2022 with the residential rollout starting in the fourth quarter of 2022 through 2023. The fiber-to-the-premise will actually allow us to have gigabit performance to each resident, but in order to maximize the performance of that fiber-to-the-premise service, we're going to need to get undersea fiber, which would be the best long-term solution. And we're pleased and excited to announce that we have funded a feasibility study for that undersea fiber. That project is going to, and I hope I can take this off, is that project is seeking to install high-capacity fiber optic cable under 26 miles of the San Pedro Channel between Avalon and the mainland California, and the feasibility study will assess the technical and financial feasibility of that fiber connectivity. At the conclusion of that study, we will be in a position to discuss the cable routes, which is the actual geographic routes in which it transverses under the sea, the permitting, which would be all the permits in order to install that fiber, and also the rough-order magnitude of the cost. The anticipated completion of the feasibility study is no later than the first quarter of 2022. So there's several deliverables that'll come out of that feasibility study, and I'll briefly cover them. The first is that cable route engineering will come out of that, and that will determine and will be able to identify the exact routes that that submarine cable will go between the mainland and Avalon. We'll also have cable route optimization, which will minimize the end-to-end length, but also avoid undersea high-risk areas, as well as protected maritime areas, which include any environmental issues or military issues, et cetera. The other important consideration is how do you get from the bottom of the ocean floor back onto the land, and those are called landing sites, and we'll be evaluating the logical locations both on the mainland California and on the island of Catalina to do that. Upon the completion of that feasibility study, we'll have a high route-level engineering designs for the most feasible submarine cable options. Okay, another deliverable out of that report will be those cable landing locations, and again, we're going to take into account the most logical location to do that, knowing where we have to ultimately connect back to the main internet on the mainland in our main distribution areas here on Catalina. Permitting, of course, is a critical path item, and it'll be one of the largest drivers behind the project schedule for a project of this size and scope. If permitting processes not fully understand, there could be significant project delays, and we'll have a high-level analysis of permitting and regulatory requirements at the end of that initial feasibility study. We'll have to get additional permitting information once we've identified the specific path we're going to go for, and that's called a permit feasibility study, and that'll be a next step. And speaking of that permitting feasibility study, it'll identify all the permitting processes needed in each local jurisdiction, and we'll be able to engage agencies at the city, county, state, and federal level to introduce and discuss this project. Please note that the PFS, which is the permitting feasibility study, is not included in this initial feasibility study, because we need to know the specific path before we can do that. Also coming out of that, we'll have this system design and configuration information, which will talk about the number of optical fibers that'll be in that undersea fiber, the system capacity, the transmission equipment that we would use on either end of the fiber, and the performance of the system. And we'll also have an understanding of the budgetary pricing for both the CapEx and the OpEx for the installation and ongoing service requirements for that undersea fiber. A project schedule will be created as well at a high level, and that'll include all the critical path items needed for the continuing planning of that fiber, and we'll also create a plan of work, which will serve as the mechanism to evaluate which work phases need to be contracted and executed in order to maintain that desired schedule. We're also going to identify system suppliers, which will include the people that are actually putting the fiber at the ocean floor, the actual equipment that'll go on the ends of the fiber, as well as the fiber itself. Okay, at the end of that feasibility study, we'll be able to make decisions on the required budgets, possible funding sources for the project, and business structure and partnerships to make this project actually happen. The next steps after the feasibility study will be what they're calling a desktop study, which will actually finalize that cable route between Catalina and the mainland, and we'll start having discussions with stakeholders, and of course, the city of Avalon and the residents of Avalon are a very important stakeholder in all this. And then the key timelines for the next steps, the initial feasibility study, as I mentioned, will be no later than the end of the first quarter of 2022, and then after that, the desktop study would take about four months from that start. My contact information is Michael Piasseki, and I can be reached at, probably during the days of COVID, at my cellphone, which is 540-379-5102. If anybody who's listening to this has any questions or any comments, or knows of anything that we need to know, I'm more than happy to engage them. And I got to open it up for any questions? Wow, I expect a few. Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any questions of the audience, or, Michael, did you receive anything?
I don't have any comments.
I just have one comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just to see where you guys have gone in your planning, that's amazing, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's been encouraging to see some of the plans, just with the microwave growth that they're wanting to do already, before they even get started with the undersea fiber, but to have this be something where we're actually getting into feasibility studies, I think, is encouraging, and yeah, thank you as well.
Thank you. Cynthia, you sent her, you're good, no questions?
Yeah, I just want to say, it's been fantastic, learning a lot more about broadband and solutions, and how we can do better for the community. When I first moved here 15 years ago, this was a hot topic at the chamber, Kevin Strigie, Wayne Griffin, and a whole group were actively saying, we've really got to get on this, and here we are, so it's very exciting to be on this end of it now.
You sending any comments, or are you good?
I did see on our Zoom chat here that Ms. Revlin Williams did want us to announce that the Catalina broadband survey will be reprinted in the Catalina Islander newspaper on November 19th in both English and in Spanish.
Great.
And that was part of her primary purpose for being here tonight, was just to discuss that survey. What we're hoping is that a high number of residents and businesses can fill that survey out and complete it, whether you take the survey from the paper and drop it back off with the chamber on the pier, or if you complete it online, that sentiment survey will be part of the packet that we go forward with to help build some of this funding that we're looking for.
Excellent, great, okay. Okay, oral communication, this is where members of the community may address the council on items that are not on the agenda, you will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken. Anything on your machine, Mike?
I have no comments.
Okey-dokey. All right, let's go to the consent calendar.
We have four items this evening on the consent calendar, the first one is three sets of minutes, the first one is from the regular city council meeting of October 19th, and then the two from the special city council meetings of October 26th and October 27th. We have warrants for a total disbursement of $1,722,239.52 for the time period of September 20th through April 22, 2021. The third one is to adopt the resolution accepting the fiscal year 2122 first-quarter treasurers report. The fourth one is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment to the semi-exclusive shoreboat franchise and shoreboat services provider agreement with Catalina Coastal Tours LLC, increasing the annual subsidy amount and establishing new fare rates, and that is for a five-year term, starting on March 15th of 2022.
Do we, want to take action, do you want to pull any items?
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items one through four.
All second.
Move your second, if there's nothing on Michael's machine, and no comments from the audience, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, our only item on general business this evening is to hear a report from the president and CEO of the Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau Annual Year End Report. It's our audited financials, and he is obligated to do this, so.
Good evening, I think Matt's bringing up the presentation here. All right, well, as I said, good evening, mayor, council, and members of the public, I am pleased to be in front of you once again, as has been our practice each year around this time, once our audit is wrapped up, I come and give you the high points of the audit and their findings, and despite COVID, there's a lot of good news that you're going to be seeing here, everybody. Roughly the same outline I've used the last few years, I'll just show you quickly our mission, purpose, and vision, I'll talk about the current state of Catalina Island tourism, how we have used our tourism promotion and audited financials, and compare that to the measures in the municipal code. I'll give a real brief look at our competitive set, although data is lagging for them, so we don't have as quite up to date as I would like, and then show you a few work examples on some of our recent and ongoing work in tourism promotion. For those of you who've been on the council a few years, you've seen this slide many times before, it shows the virtuous cycle of how you invest in us, and we in turn invest those dollars in tourism promotion and bring support of jobs and many critical systems in the city through the spending of the visitors once they come here. And I think I went multiple slides. There we are. So you'll recognize most of the people in this picture, a couple of them are even in the room. So here on the right, you'll see a list of the board that was serving us for the fiscal year that we've just completed and that was just audited. At the end of the year, we said so long to one board member, not in the picture unfortunately, Yoli Se, who completed multiple terms of service on the board, and then we welcomed a new board member for the new fiscal year, Sharon Gorilchenko. And all of our other members this year were eligible to continue another term, so everybody else listed there is continuing deserved. A quick look at visitor counts, I'm sure you all just, you know, wait with bated breath each month for the detailed reporting that we provide, but I did pull one slide that I thought was a really good way to drive home the ongoing impacts of COVID-19. Even as good as the year felt by comparison, we closed out the fiscal year at 613 visitors counted, that's down from the prior fiscal year of 759,303, and well below our averages of over a million pre-COVID. And, shoot, I made it a darker background, hoping it would be more visible than that, so I apologize for the middle section being a little gray, but what this chart is intending to reference for your comparison is the detail on visitor counts pre-COVID-19 and then during. We truly bottomed out in January, as far as visitor counts go, January 2021, that is, but just before that, in December of 2020, we had our lowest level of occupancy in hotels, combination of normal winter slowdown plus COVID restrictions, obviously, but in my time on the island, I've never seen a hotel occupancy that low, 9%. Revenue from hotel and vacation rental stays was strong during the last four months of the fiscal year, even with lower occupancy rates, so in other words, revenue drove most of the TOT over the amount of rooms that were occupied. As Matt has pointed out to you, each month when he presents the tourism-driven revenue too, immediately pre-COVID, we had a lot of rooms out of inventory, so our percentage rates for occupancy are from a greater volume of rooms as well in the current market. There we go. So some of the basic tourism promotion measures that we always keep at a constant are looking at the TOT revenue. For the fiscal year, in the fiscal year, we received $809,412.48. The audit-adjusted total figure that you will have seen in the audit that was forwarded to you last week is $1,291,291.291. audit that was forwarded to you last week is $1,291,095. And that is inclusive of a TOT true-up at the end of the fiscal year, but hit our bank account, if you will, after the new fiscal year began, of $481,682. For the fiscal year end, our total tourism-driven revenues to the city of Avalon, excuse me, not our revenues, the city's revenues was $12,621,398, or a growth of 11%. And again, as I said, that mostly came at the end of the fiscal year. The, it's important to note that we did not receive the true-up during the fiscal year of 2021. So those funds, while they were accounted for in the audit, are being spent in the new fiscal year. So we got those funds in August, the 400-plus thousand, and we're beginning to implement the spending of that now, even though financially it lives on the fiscal year just ended's books. As has been the case each year, for the time I've been here on the island, we spent more than the TOT received in tourism promotion, but for that true-up this one time. Albeit this year, that was by a smaller margin than in past years. Based on the funds received and the counts of visitors, the total acquisition per visitor was $1.25, down slightly from the prior year. So here we get into the meat of it, and I'll do my best to be speedy here because there's a lot of detail. You see on the left, the ordinance and the requirement of 22% allocation for us is in the form of tourism promotion and music. Our total fiscal year budget was just under $1.6 million, and the post-true-up adjusted TOT allocation was about $1.3 million. We obtained $270,000 in EIDL, that's Economic Injury Disaster Loans, and PPP, Payroll Protection Plan, funds, as well as some grants. Those funds were spread over multiple fiscal years in accordance with the rules for each of those application periods. So while the money hit our books in this fiscal year, not all of it was applicable to this fiscal year. Coupled with earned revenue of $163,900, the auditors removed the previous note, which was called a going concern. You may recall that last year I had to report out that they had flagged us for concern over our financial well-being going forward. That's what that means on that term. I'm very happy that that has been removed. It has been removed retroactively, and it does not appear on this year's audited financials because of how well we recovered. The relief we benefited in the form of those CARES Act programs came late and not without a lot of effort, as initially 501(c)(6), that's the type of nonprofit that we are, were deemed ineligible to apply for any of those programs. We were even a case study that traveled all the way to Washington, D.C., and to the congressional floor in appealing for a revocation of that prohibition. As a result of those funds that were received, we brought back furloughed team members, and our Board of Directors okayed moving some overhead allocated budget dollars to additional asset development for future tourism promotion in the form of a reopening campaign and a photo and video shoot. Public health orders restricted our ability to provide any of our normal live music programs during the fiscal year, however we were able to resume early in the new year after the close of this fiscal year. So on this slide, you'll see the portions of the ordinance that direct visitor services and public relations, as well as a portion devoted to meeting and event planners. Despite the periods of closure and furloughs, we welcomed 12,262 walk-in visitors at the center on the pier, and we answered nearly 7,000 phone calls. For much of the year, calls were heavily oriented toward details on what was open, when and where outdoor dining was available, and what protections were in place, or depending on your perspective, what prohibitions were in place, to inhibit the spread of COVID-19 and how that would impact the visitor experience. We made a budget decision not to reprint hard copies of the visitor guide last year for one time. And so you'll see that the numbers are relatively small and distributed digital copies of the guide and printed copies as well. We just carried over inventory from the period of closure and continued distributing those partially outdated hard copies for now. We have resumed production of a printed guide for 2022, and our subscribers to the monthly eBlast remained loyal subjects, opening at about 16% versus an industry standard of 10% open rate. So we continue to exceed the standard. Social media followers grew too, with Instagram showing the largest number year over year. And I don't have a lot of data on our competitive set on that, but I can tell you that I know in general, throughout COVID, Instagram and Facebook were primary vehicles for entertainment. And so I think that that bodes well for why we saw that growth as well. There's an important one on the right, media relations. COVID greatly impacted the number of hosted media we could have here. This is an all-time low since I've been on the island, only 11 hosted media. But I'm happy to say, as you mentioned, Mayor, one of those was the Food Network. I mean, we pretty much, you know, we had relatively small numbers of hosted media or parties of hosted media, but boy, did we get some bang for our buck when they came. And this is not even inclusive of that value because that aired in the new fiscal year. They just were hosted during that fiscal year. So the media relations that we calculate to the fiscal year end is 684 stories out of 30 billion impressions. And much of the paid media equivalent value is ongoing because so many of the programs that we had that were film-oriented are syndicated shows. So something like that Food Network might air three and four and five times, and it will have a growing value that we'll have to calculate going forward. Okay, here on this, you see the same sections of the ordinance displayed on the left, but we illustrate expenses and show here where they exceeded the TOT income. We calculated that we exceeded it by $44,278. And that's when taking into account, of course, those true-up funds falling in the new fiscal year. Our website continued to be a primary tool for visitors and for visitors serving businesses. In fact, the COVID-19 microsite we developed early in the pandemic continued to be a home to frequently update information on what was open, what was required, and offering funding resources for businesses struggling to stay afloat. The go-to partner site was refreshed upon reopening of the island, and we saw some respectable reopening-driven visitation there. The graph on the right illustrates year-over-year website traffic by month, with red representing the fiscal year 2021, and, I'm happy to say, showing a March-through-June traffic that nearly matches normal summer month traffic. If you look at the, oh, I'm on the slide, aren't I?
Thanks.
There we are. There's the slide. So the red marks on the right, you can see they're nearly as high as the blue marks on the left. So that's pre-COVID blue on the left and during COVID on the right, or during our reopening on the right. So we grew pretty significantly.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see if I'm going the right way. Yes, that's the next slide forward. I apologize for going backward on the other one. With regard to groups visiting the island, meeting planners are predicting, and this was illustrated at our marketing conference again the other day by outside sources, that meeting planners are saying that 2022 will be the beginning of any real return to business meetings in person. Consumers are saying they want to travel again, even for work travel, but they, mostly because they are citing Zoom fatigue. We are seeing some new demand within some core constituencies in that regard. Film and travel and tourism industry sectors are among the first who are emerging in not only professional travel, but resuming in-person meetings. We have currently on the books for early 2022, an in-person meeting on island with Visit California. We have a film locations in California meeting booked for attendance here on the island. And hopefully soon, I'll be able to share with you an announcement regarding a CalTravel board meeting taking place here on the island as well. Overall demand for filming is up, and we continue to see crew visits filling room blocks for multiple nights at a time. So that's a good segue to the next part of the ordinance, which is where the city can ask of us to do things that are not directly tourism promotion-related. Film permits are an example of that, and we do that frequently on behalf of the city, in conjunction with the city. That's one of the areas where Iowa missed in. The audit deadline was met, and as mentioned earlier, the going concern was removed retroactively on the prior year's audit, and it does not appear on this year's audit. Prior year financials have therefore been restated in that audit packet. So we did not reissue the previous financial statements that had that. It was the auditor's advice that we just showed the comparison column restating that and taking the footnote off. And while we benefited greatly from the PPP, EIDL, and grants that allowed for additional tourism promotions, including the much-needed content shoot that will support us for many years to come with new photo and video assets. Sorry, I broke my good glasses yesterday, and I've got a crummy old pair that are sliding down my nose here. So we continue to use the TOT or Tourism Promotion Funds, well, no, let me rephrase that because it could be a big mistake. We continue to use no TOT or Tourism Promotion Funds for political action, and we take pride in our transparency with all finances being posted online. We would welcome at any moment a city audit or inspection of our books, and with the new audit completed and soon our tax forms being completed, we will again pursue the GuideStar seal of transparency for the new year. So I told you in the beginning that our data sets for a competitive set were a little muddy at the moment. You can imagine they're all lagging on their reporting and have had the same ups and downs that we have. So this is largely the same slide you've seen in previous years, showing what the TOT rates are, what, if any, T-Bid rates are in those marketplaces, and what their total pre-COVID budgets were. I'll continue to monitor and track them, and once we have a post-COVID update on those funds, we will share that information. Not one of our competing destinations, but I was recently at a CalTravel meeting, and some destinations on the mainland that have large population bases were able to attract a lot more CARES funding than we were. One of the measures for a lot of those fundings is population base, not visitor base. And so that was one of the shortcomings for us. So I won't go into great detail here because there's a lot on this slide, but some of the other important things we do. For those of you who attended the marketing conference, you heard a detailed report from destination analysts, not only on the national trends, but they had done a national survey specific to the island, and we had a couple of samples there of how people are perceiving the island, and pretty respectable numbers given the fact that it was a national sample. We have asked them to re-fracture that as just a California-only response rate, because we know that the majority of our visitors come from within states. So we will have that information shortly to share. We also publish every Thursday the most recent data from destination analysts, and we have just invested with them in the first of what we hope will be several passion profiles. We invested in a long-haul hiker passion profile, which is a demographic study, the likes of which we could never take on ourselves, with that detail to someone who chooses to travel either a long distance to pursue hiking, or hikes a long distance. That's what a long-haul hiker is. It was clear from them and from many other sources, for all of us who work in tourism promotion on the island every day, that dining is a really important factor in their decision-making process on what they'll do and where they'll spend on the island. And so that's something for us all to be cognizant of, whether it's in the visual representations of how we promote the island, or the information we have on our website, for example. So, and just as an example of that, we do now have a landing page devoted to vegetarian cuisine on the island, gluten-free on the island, because those are such frequently asked and sought pieces of information. We maintain capacity lists, very important for group meeting planners and for film crew coming to the island, so they know how many seats are in a room, or how many seats we have on a bus, or all of that. We keep our monthly visitor stats up to date, and we have been sharing now for over a year with you at council our monthly PR clipbooks. And I encourage you, please, to look. It's a deep, deep dive and a luxury. I didn't have that quality of a clipbook in any other destination I worked in before coming here. So we're fortunate to have that now. Annual calendar of events, annual cruise ship schedule, consumer comments and sentiments. And I did share at our board meeting the other day, we're seeing an uptick in consumer comments regarding the health of our deer population. And the fact that we know that the state of California is responsible for managing that herd doesn't give a lot of solace to someone who's concerned for the well-being of that animal. We have significantly updated and enhanced the book direct feature on our website, bringing more revenue to our lodging properties with no fees, unlike an Expedia or something like that. They don't have to pay a fee for book direct bookings. We are engaged in the water rate case issues with key stakeholders in the community, and as you heard earlier tonight, with internet and cellular connectivities on the island. We're also currently engaged with both local stakeholders and statewide stakeholders on the California Air Resources Board rules that, if passed as currently proposed, would have a devastating effect on our local economy. We saw at our marketing conference last week how important dining is to island-bound travelers, and so we maintain consistently updated information on what's open and when. And as we go into winter this year, that will again be really important. As you're all aware, we can end up with that day of the week where nearly every restaurant is closed, and we're going to really work hard with our restaurants this year to see if we can encourage sharing between them, so that maybe that doesn't happen. Let's see. We continue to look forward to fully resuming our role as event managers and makers, as well as event supporters, but I did include our list of typical events there on the right. So at the marketing conference the other day, we were presented with two concept campaigns, and I just pulled a couple of those slides here for you to see. We're going to do some A/B testing. We'll launch both sets of concepts the same week, and then whichever one is drawing the most attention among consumers, that'll become our primary campaign, and we'll park the other one for now. So this is concept one for a digital campaign, and this is concept two. And we have bets going in the office on which one's going to win. So here you see the actual elements that we're going forward with this year. A lot of social media channels again, programmable display on streaming TV, and we're going back into the out-of-home market, which is the modern terminology for what you and I probably grew up calling billboards. And so we have some key placements on highly-traveled corridors where those will be going live in the coming months.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't understand 50 and 50, what programmatic display and then 50 what? Connected TV 50?
I believe it's referring to a percentage of the budget allocation. It's 50% of each of those within that strata of the budget.
Okay.
And that was theoretically my quick down-and-dirty report. The actual printed audit was submitted to the city last week, and as soon as we have a board meeting to approve the Form 990 tax document, we will also be sharing that with the city. And I'm open to any questions.
Any question, council, or anybody online?
I have no comments.
I just want to say, Jim, that that was a fantastic update. And I feel like each year, it gets more and more interesting and more information presented and more things that the chamber's doing, and sharing a little bit more ideas of what the chamber can do with the communities. So, great presentation. Thank you very much.
Yeah. I agree. Thank you, Jim.
All right. All right.
So is there a motion to receive and file the audit report?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved in second. Call for the votes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Good to general business. Now we go into closed session?
Yes, we have three items this evening in closed session. The first one is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Paragraph 1 of Subdivision 54956.9. Name of the case is Long Beach Unified School District versus Santa Catalina Island Company and City of Avon, U.S. District Court, Central District of California, Case Number 219CV01139JFWAS. Second one is public employee appointment, title is the city manager. Third one is conference with labor negotiators, agency negotiator is the city attorney, and unrepresented employee is the city manager.
Great. Okay, we'll be back. When we're back.
I'm sorry, oh and we are back from closed session.
There is no reportable action.
Okay, no further business, meeting is adjourned.